Okay, it's time to class. I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 2nd Planning Board meeting. Would you join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Gianni?
Here.
Mr. McSulph?
Present.
Mrs. Bright?
Present.
Mr. Tuso?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
And he's not here, but I think we've... You're here, John?
I am, I am, thank you.
There you go, okay, we got you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, John.
Before we start, I just want to welcome Tony back. We missed you very much. Happy you're back.
Oh, gosh, we're losing people too.
Happy you're back.
Nice to be back, let me tell you. That was a trip and a half. Anyways, we're good, everything's going forward. With that, let's see, what do we have? We got one, two, three, four, four signs, then White Waters. Mark, why don't you go ahead and start with that first one?
Before we start, you have to do like an organizational thing, since you were in here in January.
Organizational thing?
He should go over here, appoint someone, actually, the Secretary.
You didn't do that, thanks, John. Yeah, you're right, I didn't even think of that. Well, that's wild, me too. Well, okay, then I think, well, I think what we have to do is appoint somebody as Vice Chairman, Deputy Chairman of the Planning Board. I would nominate Dave Lawton to get the service. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Good, that's it. Secretary?
Secretary?
Secretary, we have Mark.
Thank you for the motion. Thank you for the motion. Now, we have a Secretary of the Planning Board.
Okay, you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Oh, there it is, I forgot all about it. Good thinking, good thinking, John. All right, we all set?
Yep.
All right, why don't you go ahead, Mark, start with that lakefront soccer.
First item on the agenda tonight is lakefront soccer sign located at 1645 Walter Industrial Park. The applicant, Kyle DeBryan, is requesting sign approval to allow the installation of approximately 30 square foot monument sign for the lakefront sports park on a 39.28 acre parcel located in an industrial district under section 265-7 of the code of the town of Webster.
Oh, there you are. Couldn't see you behind that wall, sorry.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I'm Kyle DeBryan, I'm the Club Director at Lakefront Soccer Club. We are looking to put, as you said, a post and panel sign facing east and west, double-sided, non-lit at 1645 Walter Industrial Parkway. If you guys have any other questions, feel free to answer. This will be installed by Vital Signs to put this together with us.
Anybody, any questions?
You could be allowed signs at six feet with a little monument thing in the center there, maybe over six feet, is that all right?
Oh, well, it's a sag over all... You mean with the curb on the top?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's a good idea. It's pretty much a secluded area, it's not like it's even on the main highway. What's the height for the 47? Well, okay, it's 80 inches, and if you took that piece off, what's that, maybe six inches or less, something like that? It's within the 60, right? Right, you remember, right?
Yeah.
With the thing inside?
Yeah.
And it's nice that they have the address?
Yeah, that's okay, it's, you know, it's all loaded.
And it's nice they have the address, huh?
Yeah, they do have the address on there. Good question, John. All right, anybody, any issues?
No, it'll certainly make those fields easier to find, the signage there hasn't been great for a while.
Yep, need something out there.
It's unlit again, right?
Exactly.
Unlit, no lights?
No lights.
All right.
Really nowhere is when you see all the cars. When there's all the cars there.
Oh, yeah. All right, gotta do a secret. Who's doing it? You guys doing it, or Chad doing it?
I'll do it.
The Town of Webster Planning Board considered the request by applicant Kyle DeBryan to install a 30 square foot monument sign for Lakefront Sports Park located at 1645 Walter Industrial Park on a 39.28 acre parcel having SBL number 066.03-1-6.001. The Planning Board classifies proposed action to be a Type 2 action under section 617.5 subsection C subsection 2 of the State Environmental Review Seeker Regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Okay, we have a motion, you have a second? You have a second?
Derek.
For Chad, you have a motion, is that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, your motion for approval for the sign?
Aye.
I mean, yes. I'll make a motion for the, for the approval of the lakefront soccer sign located at 1645 Walter Industrial Park for a 30 square foot monument sign, non-lit monument sign as presented.
Your motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's it. This is all set?
Thank you.
Second item on the agenda tonight, go car wash site located at 1145 Ridge Road. The applicant Mike Momano is requesting sign approval to replace three existing building mounted signs and associated tenant parking within the existing monument sign to reflect the business name change on a 1.6 acre parcel located in a medium industrial district under section 265-7 of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening, my name is Mike Momano, I'm at Clinton Signs at 1407 Empire Boulevard. We're requesting a change of signage from the row car washes to the go car wash. After a much long debate with the customer and everyone involved, we decided just to stay the backers that are all up there, pull the row car washes off those existing white backers, and just add our new letters to the backers. So no square footage changes, we have orange letters up on the backer, they're not illuminated, there's a goose night light that comes over the top. They're on two sides of the building, and they're going to add an exit only and an enter only, small panels on the lower portion of the side of the building for exit and enter, and there's a small round monument sign, it just has a base change. And we will let them know that there is no opaque background that needs to be done on the ground of the monument sign.
I'm surprised they're putting the entrance and exit, except only an entrance. I mean, once you go through the toll gate there and you come in there, where the hell do you think you're going? There's only one way, is to go through the entrance. Okay.
That's a good, that makes a very good point, once you're in, you're in.
Do I need a sign to tell me this is the entrance? I mean, where else can I go?
The point can understand the exit lines, they don't want to line, they don't want to line them on the exit, but yeah, it's a very good point.
Power wash, I know it's a power wash, but there has to be a direction for the exit sign?
Are directional signs, I think, versus sign signs?
Basically doing the same thing that's already existing, other than those little signs, I have an issue with it, but I just don't understand the logic. Exit only. So nobody's going to go in there, there's cars coming out at you, you know?
I agree totally.
All right. Anybody, any issues with this? The signs are basically going in the same place, just different. When they've got Royal Car Wash and they're putting Car Wash, we know it's a Car Wash. I mean, I'd prefer them to say Go Car Wash or something.
Well, they said Go on the one, on the one elevation, and then the word.
There's nothing there, look.
There is on the front monument sign, there's the Go on top of it, it's just on the edge, it just says Car Wash.
There's an eight-foot sign there saying Car Wash, I know it's a Car Wash.
But that's part, part of their name, it's Go Car Wash, the Car Wash is a name, and the Go is right here on the monument on the front.
And it's in Ridge Road.
And, and it's also on the monument sign.
It's not here.
Because it's like, the Go is more of a logo than part of the sign.
I understand, see what I'm saying?
But they're just trying to fit it into the existing, like, placards on the building, so there's really no...
My point is, right here, it says Royal Car Wash, where you went, over here it just says Car Wash. I'd rather see it say Go Car Wash and make it similar to the other one, or eliminate the sign, Car Wash, you know you're at Car Wash, why do you need a big eight-foot sign over there? See what I'm saying? That's all right, that's what we want, right? All right. Anybody, any issues with this?
No.
The signs are basically going in the same place, just different.
Just changing the ways.
When they've got Royal Car Wash and they're putting Car Wash, we know it's a Car Wash. I mean, I'd prefer them to say Go Car Wash or something.
Well, they said Go on the one, on the one elevation, and then the word.
There's nothing there, look.
There is on the front monument sign, there's the Go on top of it, it's just on the edge, it just says Car Wash.
There's an eight-foot sign there saying Car Wash, I know it's a Car Wash.
But that's part, part of their name, it's Go Car Wash, the Car Wash is a name, and the Go is right here on the monument on the front.
And it's in Ridge Road.
And, and it's also on the monument sign.
It's not here.
Because it's like, the Go is more of a logo than part of the sign.
I understand, see what I'm saying?
But they're just trying to fit it into the existing, like, placards on the building, so there's really no...
My point is, right here, it says Royal Car Wash, where you went, over here it just says Car Wash. I'd rather see it say Go Car Wash and make it similar to the other one, or eliminate the sign, Car Wash, you know you're at Car Wash, why do you need a big eight-foot sign over there? See what I'm saying? That's all right, that's what we want, right? All right. Anybody, any issues or concerns with that? Okay, I'm going to do a secret.
The Town of Webster Planning Board considered the request by applicant Mike Momano to replace three existing building mounted signs and associated tenant panels with an existing monument sign for Go Car Wash located at 1145 Ridge Road on a 1.66 acre parcel having SBL number 079.16-1-22.003. The Planning Board classifies the proposed action to be a Type 2 action under section 617.5 subsection C subsection 2 of the State Environmental Review Seeker Regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Your motion, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for approval for Go Car Wash is presented, I guess?
I'll make a motion for the Go Car Wash sign, sign is located at 1145 Ridge Road to replace the three existing building monument signs and associated panel signs with the existing monument signs. Do we have to say anything about the other exit signs?
Well, they're basically just... The signs are all in the same place, just a different name, I mean, I suppose you could just say as presented.
Okay, all right.
That would cover it. That okay with you, John?
Yeah.
It covers everything, it's just the signs that they're showing. Want to do that?
Yep. My motion, how's that?
Okay, your motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that one's good.
Great, thank you.
You got another one, Chad?
Panera Bread.
I think you've got the next one too, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's yours too.
The Panera Bread sign is located at 935 Holt Road, applicant Mike Momano, and he's requesting sign approval to replace existing building mounted facade signs to reflect Panera's corporate rebranding on a 15.14 acre parcel located in a high intensity commercial district under section 265-7 of the code of the town of Webster.
Okay.
Okay, good evening, Mike Momano from Clinton Signs, 1407 Empire Boulevard. Panera Bread has now changed to a corporate logo, where it would look like you just take the letters down off of the building and put the new sign logo in exactly the same spot, same type of letter.
Actually, the newer one does look nice.
It's a new, it's a smaller, a little bit more distinct. Different styles of letters, yes.
Yeah, it's got that logo on there. It's that three-foot guy.
It probably fits in approximately the same square foot area.
It's a sign, I don't know many people.
Individual channel letters, LEDs internal, yes.
So just, yes, that's good, in other words, Panera Bread is lit, that's it?
Yes.
All right, how many more are there on there?
There's two elevations.
I don't mind, it's just replacing signs that are already there with new stuff.
Absolutely.
All right. All right, anybody, any questions? I know Derek had a comment that the pictures were dark, and he's correct, they are dark, but I think there's adequate number of pictures in there, they're clear, but you can't see, they're not that dark, you know what they're referring to, so, not a big... All right, looks okay, we have a secret?
Excuse me, please. The Town of Webster Planning Board considered the request by applicant Mike Momano to replace existing building mounted signs for Panera Bread located at 935 Holt Road on a 15.14 acre parcel having SBL number 079.16-1-2.11. The Planning Board classifies the proposed action to be a Type 2 action under section 617.5 subsection C subsection 2 of the State Environmental Review Seeker Regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Your motion for a secret, you have a second?
Second.
Your motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the same, same signs, only just different, different, so on and so forth. Your motion?
I'll make a motion for the Panera Bread sign located at, sign located at 935 Holt Road to replace the existing building mounted facade signs to reflect Panera's corporate rebranding as presented. Second.
Your motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, Mike.
Great, thank you very much.
Just take it easy on Amy, though.
What's that?
Just take it easy on Amy.
The fourth item on tonight's agenda, Sage signs located at 811 Ridge Road. The applicant Amy Catalano is requesting sign approval to allow the installation of a 11.5 square foot building mounted facade sign to reflect new business within the Webster Woods Plaza on a 1.26 acre parcel located in a medium intensity commercial district under section 265-7 of the code of the town of Webster.
Hi, I'm Amy Catalano from Vital Signs, 764 Ridge Road, proposing this non-lit sign panel pushed onto the building. This elevation faces, oh, yeah, it's not facing five mile a ridge, I don't know if one of them is facing one. Is certainly a sign on the other side, any other signs on the other side to reflect the businesses there?
No, there isn't, they each have their own, there's separate entrance on the other side, so this would be her entrance, and that's where the signs are.
That sign is kind of big, can you make it have that size?
We can make it twice as big, I would believe.
Just kidding, just kidding.
Is there a sign there now that it's replacing?
There's nothing there now, there's just the address.
That's kind of what I thought, yeah.
And she's gotten approval from the building owner.
When did you take this picture with all that snow and...
A while ago.
What is, what is Sage, what is this, is it a, what kind of business?
I'm going to kind of make it up, I'm not 100% sure, but I think it's like a, I think there's some light coaching and score groups, that sort of thing.
Oh, okay.
Is this sign a little bright, or is there goose night lighting there?
I don't believe there's any lighting there right now, there might be some external lighting, but the panel itself is not lit. Might come in some external, that won't work.
And that's the only sign, they're not putting a monument sign out, or in the monument sign?
There, let's see, no, I don't think so.
They knew it would fit in with what's existing monument sign that they had, so that's up to them. All right. Let's see, any issues, anybody?
No.
All right. You have a bit to work with.
The Town of Webster Planning Board considered the request by applicant Amy Catalano to install a 11.5 square foot building mounted facade sign for Sage located at 811 Ridge Road on a 1.26 acre parcel having SBL number 079.18-1-69.112. The Planning Board classifies proposed action to be a Type 2 action under section 617.5 subsection C subsection 2 of the State Environmental Review Seeker Regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Okay, your motion, you have a second?
Second.
There we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion for approval for the sign, Sage?
I'll make a motion for approval of Sage sign located at 811 Ridge Road for 11.5 square foot building mounted facade sign as presented.
Okay, your motion, your second, all in favor?
The address is, just the address that I think the Ridge Road is, or is the vital sign address? The sign is at Webster Woods Plaza 870 Ridge Road? Did you say 807?
Is it 807? I know at one time we had, let me submit it, Christine, let me know if you have a different address.
Yeah, that's what it says on the sheet, it's really dark.
870?
It's 807 on the white.
Okay, this one says 870, there it says. What is the address?
The application says 870, and just the notes say 811, just making sure that the other one...
And then our drawing says 807, so I can't...
I can't point at what it says on the building.
So technically it's 811 Ridge Road, it's not physical location.
That's it? Okay, so we have a lot in Ridge Road.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, good. All right, you have a motion for that, Chad, you may make that.
Second.
You have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're covered with that.
Thank you.
Final item on tonight's agenda, White Waters Webster Plaza tenant renovation located at 950 Ridge Road. Applicant Greg Moyer is requesting eliminating rental site plan approval, attending a public hearing to allow modifications to the existing building, including construction of loading dock, demolition, reconstruction of additional outdoor storage area, and associated site improvements, widening the sidewalk and addition of ADA parking spaces on the 37th and 9th acre parcel located in a high intensity commercial district under section 269-11 of the code of the town of Webster.
Sir? I've got a little change of pace for you guys, keep away from the signage there. My name's Chase Kramer, I'm with CED, we're representing our client, White Waters, joining me tonight is my colleague Kirk. We're basically going to be redoing the building up there at the...
Can you use that light a little bit?
Yeah. We're going to be redoing the... There we go, hear me now? So we're going to be redoing the building out at the Webster's Plaza at 950 Ridge Road. So we're going to be splitting the former Kmart into two spaces, one for a future tenant and one for a Harbor Freight. In addition to this work, we're going to be expanding the sidewalk out front from seven feet to 12 feet, throwing in some new ADA ramps for the future tenant and Harbor Freight, and then moving out towards... Oh, and then also relocating some of the existing ADA spaces, just to meet curb compliance and make the ADA spots a little bit more accessible to the future tenants. Moving out towards the back of the building, we're going to be installing a new such truck dock, building expansion, a small building expansion for that truck dock at the rear. Because of the expansion and the truck dock, we're going to have to bump out the drive aisle in the back a little bit to accommodate that, total disturbance for the site is about, is less than half acre, and that's pretty much it.
Probably one thing you should do in your finished drawing is correct the proposed in the future, you've got 41,000 square feet on both.
Yeah, so the future one is 41,000, and the Harbor Freight is going to be around 16,000 square feet.
Yeah, you probably should change that.
Absolutely.
You're widening the sidewalk, you're forcing it straight across?
Correct.
And match up with the rest of it, all right?
Correct.
And now the back?
Yes.
The back of that building is, I don't think it's Harbor Freight's issue, it's probably going to White Waters, but the area that's got the wood covering all over it there, it's a mess.
Okay.
It's absolutely disgusting.
Yes.
I mean, the bottom's rotted out, there's papers and all sorts of trash stuck under it. I don't know what they're proposing to do with that.
We forwarded on some of these comments to the owner, and they made aware of it, so they said they were looking to take care of that.
I think we should put that in, that be cleaned up and repaired to good condition.
Sure.
As part of it, nothing to do with Harbor Freight, it's to do with the building itself, you know?
Correct.
Which is White Waters. The other thing you've got is your loading dock, you're going to hollow that down, you're going to drop, you've got to drain down on the bounce, you're dropping down about two or three feet or something?
Correct.
And that still will catch the sewer out there, or that?
So that will not catch the sewers, so we're going to have to install a pump to pump out.
Oh, really?
Yes. And then that'll tie into the relocated storm line that runs in the back of the building.
Okay, yep, I see it there, you've got a stormwater some pump.
Yep.
Yep, I see it now, I didn't see it before. How is Harbor Freight in your inventory?
I believe they're going to be getting it through the front door, but they didn't have any plans...
Do you want me to answer?
Sure.
I'm Lori, I'm from Storecrafters.
I have to close now, I might have to call, what's your name?
Hi, my name is Lori Schindler, I'm from Storecrafters, we've been a Harbor Freight general contractor for 10 years, and we're located here in Rochester, we're going to be the general contractor of record. Harbor Freight's proposing to put in, they bring all their merchandise through the loading dock area, and it delivers two times a month in four trucks. And it's going, if I'm not, it's going where the garden center is, they're proposing to make that the loading dock area. So it's going to be off to the side of the building, not in the back.
So they're going to be just loading through the door there? Okay, so, so again, my comment in the PRC was, the loading dock is proposed, you know, you're going down and going in with? Is that, is that for Ollies, or is that for both?
Harbor Freight will have their own loading dock area, they don't share. That's a, because Harbor Freight's taking the end at the garden center over, so off to the side where the garden center is, it's, will be taken out the garden center, and we'll be opening that, open that up to make that the loading dock area.
Okay, but your loading dock is...
Yeah, right.
What kind of a loading dock is...
Yeah, so that'll be for the, that'll be for the future tenant that hasn't been named yet. Because they're going to be, they're going to be installing a demise mall, so Harbor Freight has a 16,000 square foot portion of the building in the south, they're going to be loading their product from the outdoor storage area. They're gonna be loading their product from the outdoor storage area.
Okay, but there's, I got you, but my question is, there's no proposed actual loading dock?
Correct.
Where you drive into, right?
Correct.
No, there's not changing the structure, the exterior?
No, not, uh.
That's, okay, now, now the loading dock that you're proposing, that's in the back of where Ollies is?
Yes.
The, the main one there? That's for Ollies, or is that?
That, that's gonna be for the future tenant, they're preparing that for a future tenant.
A future tenant?
Yes.
Does he know who the future tenant is?
Not yet.
But they're preparing a loading dock for somebody they don't even know if they need one?
So, so I'm Kirk, Kirk's around with Bergman, as Chase mentioned. So, uh, White Waters has a tenant in mind, um, they haven't signed any lease agreements specifically, that tenant would require a loading dock. They also know that there's several other tenants that they've talked to, and as part of that, uh, it makes the space much more marketable to have a separate loading dock. And with Harbor Freight taking that end of the building, you know, there wasn't options for them to be able to access that way, so part of the plan is to make that more marketable, and hopefully the tenant, uh, that they have in mind, uh, will be signed soon or again.
Okay, so where you say future tenant, right now?
Correct.
That's not where Ollies is?
Correct, it's not, so Ollies is just up north. Yeah.
Ollies is up between the two.
Yeah, all, all these loading docks actually, as you go up the building wall, and you kinda go around, uh, right on the outside corner there, the north, um, you know, so.
Okay.
I know it's a little hard to see from here, but the loading dock is on the back corner, so where we're at, and the loading dock is down here, and Ollies, their trucks come up and back in over here.
Okay, so that loading dock you're proposing is the one you're digging out?
It is a recess.
Lower down?
Yep.
That's for that future tenant?
Correct.
Okay, now.
Yeah, and it actually accesses, um, like the warehouse area in the back of the building, which was the former Kmart spot, so that's why that dock is positioned there, because it's kinda in that back of house. There's a mezzanine storage area, things like that back there that make it more, uh, more susceptible to the, to the truck deliveries. And exchange of the building.
Okay, is there anything else that you can?
So what you're saying is, in that former Kmart building, there's gonna be three businesses?
Nope, just two. Just Harbor Freight and whatever future tenant.
Well, Ollies is there too.
Well, is Ollies, was that part of Kmart's? Okay, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I wasn't sure how that was divided, cause there is a demise wall that's right on its point with Kmart.
That's, that was a happily big Kmart then.
Ollies, Ollies comes right down to this.
No, there's a space in the middle.
Ollies is over there.
Yeah, it's, it's a little hard to see on this, on this map, and you can see there's, so there's a kind of about, it's almost a third really, although, although Harbor Freight's not really taking a third of the building, cause they kinda have a back of house, but, um, you can see there's where that demise wall is, so I guess this was the total Kmart footprint. Ollies has this piece up here, which is kinda this chunk, then there's the future tenant, that kinda elves around Harbor Freight. Um, there is one other quick, uh, change, so the plans that we originally submitted had the sidewalk, as part of White Waters', had it continuing all the way down in front of that garden center, which is down by the Harbor Freight.
Mm-hmm.
We since found out that, you know, Harbor Freight's responsibility, um, cuts off at the corner there, so on our plans that we'll submit for signatures and things like that, we just show that kind of hashed out and say it's by others. Um, that sidewalk will be built, but it's not part of, of the landlord or White Water responsibility to that piece, Harbor Freight will be building that.
It'll go out to the same length?
Same, same way, yeah, yeah, it just won't, just, White Waters won't be building that, so our drawing is gonna be a little bit different in that corner.
Yeah, not a big issue?
Yeah, no, just a coordination.
So Harbor Freight, then you'd be putting doors on the side over here for loading and so on, right?
Correct. It'll, it'll be a roll-up door.
Yep. Yeah, the biggest concern I've got with this though is the back of that building, that's, that's a really, really rough shape, I, I don't know what. It has nothing to do with Harbor Freight, it's White Waters'. I don't know what you can do with that, but, that's not a pretty picture back there. Anybody got any ideas? I don't know.
So if you make it a stipulation, I will tell you, in 10 years of doing Harbor Freight, they won't turn over a store with that look. I've been to the space, I did the initial site visit, so I know what you're referring to. As the general contractor, because that's visible to where the customers will be parking, Harbor Freight will work with, um, the landlord on, on their behalf, and they will clean that up. Harbor Freight won't open a store with that back there like that.
So if we put that in a resolution, then we're?
The Harbor Freight will make sure it gets cleaned up.
Looking for some cooperation?
Yep, as the general contractor, we'll work with the landlord to make sure it's cleaned up.
Okay, all right, um, anyone else with preliminary file?
Would that show, if, this is the, the site plan approval from White Waters', so that when we put that in as a stipulation for this, or for the Harbor Freight, or both?
Well, it's all one application, the drawing is one, showing the loading dock over here for future tenant, and the proposed Harbor Freight, so it's all one, but the back of that building is where it refers to, it's all part of it.
Right, I understand that there was a separate, separate application for Harbor Freight, they had their own application, and this is the White Waters' application, they're two separate things? Or am I, or, or am I misunderstanding that? Because Harbor Freight came in with their own package, their own signage, and their own, what they planned on doing, and this is what the building owner, the landlord, plans to do to the site to get it ready for Harbor Freight to come in, through two separate entities?
Good question, I, I'm assuming it's all one.
Yeah, this, this last month, they were here primarily for signage, um, for the Harbor Freight, and then they were also requesting the approval to reuse the outdoor storage area for the former garden center, but I think, um, because that gentleman was traveling from California, we have tried to consolidate efforts so that everything could get approved through the application tonight, the remaining elements. So everything that's going to occur should be shown on these plans.
Which is what they've got.
Correct.
Okay.
Does that, does that make sense? Is that your understanding of it?
It's tough for me to say, because I don't know what Harbor Freight's responsibility is in terms of what they're doing in that, in that garden center area, so I can't say that I can, I, I don't know what, I haven't seen any of their plans.
Okay. Um, well, they were provided at the last meeting, and essentially they're converting the fenced-in area to the loading dock that you brought us to.
Yes.
And that's going to be fully enclosed, to your understanding? Is that right?
Not enclosed, it's not enclosed.
Open?
Yeah, it should be open, and then, so they can just roll the trucks in and out.
Can you, it's, I think for, for the recording, those that are in here.
She's done. All right, I'm, I'm just assuming that everything that's on this drawing is what is being proposed for preliminary approval, loading dock, and so on and so forth, and the detail on the drawings, I, I just, I've cut the sheets out that I wanted. You got the full sheet, they're probably showing, uh, on the brick side, that's where they're proposing doors and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, it shows it on there, right? I cut those out. So that's the whole drawing, so. As far as Harbor Freight, we don't have any issues with that, correct? There's no issue, anybody down there?
No, no.
With Harbor Freight, I don't have an issue with that, I mean, that's a simple, they're making some modifications, they're not rebuilding a building or anything. Um, probably have doors being changed. The only, the only concern I've got is, is the loading dock in the back, but that's for a future tenant, you're saying, back there, um, that's a pump? Before us, is this? The whole thing? The whole thing? Yeah, the whole thing. We don't even know who the future tenant's gonna be. Yeah, I don't care, as long as, as long as, they're putting a building up, and they're putting a loading dock, wherever they rent it to, there's a building.
Yep.
If there's anything that needs to be brought in, then they would have to come in saying it's Harbor Freight for, you know, change of use, or whatever the heck they're gonna do it.
That's what I just misunderstood, because last time it was a signed package, but we also talked about the garden area, and now we're talking about the rest of it, so I was just trying to clarify what was Harbor Freight, what was White Waters', so it sounds like for, for the building itself, for the area, the stipulation needs to go into this, whatever, of White Waters' approval for the site, to clean up the back.
So, so we could, we could approve this thing as presented, I mean, it's.
Correct.
I hear, right?
Correct, yeah, the only question that I have is, apparently the building plans that were submitted show a overhead door in the south elevation of the building, towards the west end, the back corner.
Right. For Harbor Freight.
On the side right here?
No, um, for, yeah, there, yes.
Yes.
Is that correct, for the future tenant?
Does there any existing door in there? No. No, I, I don't think so, we shouldn't have any door in there.
There's, there's a few comments, actually, one, can I just read them?
Yeah.
Have you dressed up? Have you got them there?
Yeah, I got it, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so from community development, they had to widen the sidewalks along the front plaza, restriping parking.
Can I get that mic a little closer?
Uh, widening those sidewalks along the front plaza, restriping the parking areas in addition of ADA accessible parking spaces, and you get the new recessed loading dock in the rear of property, need to assess impacts to sanitary and storm sewers, um, appears that an expansion of the drive aisle behind the plaza will need to be expanded to accommodate the proposed loading dock, and then clarification on site plan and tenant spaces to. Then from the building department, we have plans submitted with building permit applications show Ollies to remain as existing tenant, uh, plans showing overhead door on the south side of, of the building.
Yeah, and my concern was, according to what our building inspector told us, it's in the location of the existing transformers and the electrical equipment, so I'm, I'm just wondering if.
I'm, I'm not su, I mean, I, I don't see an overhead door in our plans, so I'm confused by that comment, I guess. There's no, if, if these comments are based on these plans, there's no overhead door specified on these.
Correct, not on the site plan, but the building plans for the building permit for the building.
For Harbor Freight?
No, for that, isn't that space connected to the future tenant space?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so someone submitted plans for that, that show a overhead door where the electrical equipment is.
We didn't, it's part of our application.
Okay, well, we'll have to, we'll, we'll reconcile that, we'll just have to double check if that's.
I, I don't know, maybe it's getting cross-referenced with the overhead door that Harbor Freight, she was talking about, it was gonna be their loading dock.
But that would be.
It wouldn't be over there.
Correct, that would be along the south plaza essentially.
Sure. Yeah, I, I'm not aware of that, our plans don't show that, so I would have to see that in order to be able to answer that question. As far as I know, there's none planned, I mean, that's why we're putting a truck action?
Correct, that's why we were a little confused, so we were going through the process, but yeah, we can, I'll work with the building inspector to clear that thing.
Okay.
I just wanted to confirm that there was no door proposed.
And there would be no site improvements, that I would know, that would be a building permit issue as well, right?
Actually, Mark's got the, see, we were thinking of maps of Harbor Freight that they were in at the corner?
Right.
Okay, this shows where the door is, here, Harbor Freight. Okay, the south elevation is showing an overhead door and a man door. So is this new, I don't know?
Is that from last week?
It's from last week. March 28, yeah.
Surely we're talking about what's in front of us right now?
Yeah, but see, they're, they're talking about the doors, and, and the plans from back don't show any.
No. So then there's no doors?
No. None of this there.
All right, you know what? If they put doors in, does it bear?
Well, it's just, there's a.
It's not really changing or anything.
It's not a site plan issue.
No, I'm looking at this right here, south elevation.
Yeah, so I think that's the Harbor Freight.
Yeah.
That's the door that she's talking about, it's gonna be by the garden center, and that's not in the, that's not in the tenant's base, that's in the Harbor Freight, that's gonna be Harbor Freight's loading dock, and there are no site, you know, site changes, that's a building permit.
Yeah, no, I, I, that's what I was just saying.
I think it's the way they have that draw, that line hash through there, that's not the entire building, it looks as though that's the corner, but I, I have a feeling that you're just looking at, I think you're just looking at this piece of the building, and that door is right here, it's not in the tenant's base. I think it's here, I don't know why, there's a transformer over there, that's a little confusing, but, I guess regardless, there are any site plan approval items associated with it.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, within the package.
I suppose. I suppose what we can do, I mean, I'm like, so prove it out, we're proving this drawing here, it doesn't show anything, approve this, the way they designed, they've got the loading dock in the back, they widened the asphalt, which was a concern to, 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 uh, to go around, correct? So they've meant everything subject to PRC, in my opinion, um, that would, that would allow us to give approval, uh, approval for what they're showing. The only thing that we don't know is what, where they're cutting openings for Harbor Freight, the doors, and we could make that subject to engineering, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
John, what do you think of that? I'm sorry? John, you there?
I think we lost John.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think that, I, I think that we could handle these remaining issues with the building.
That's what I'm thinking, with the building here, where the door goes, you know?
Correct.
If there's electrical, that's up to the town's, to the engineering?
Correct, if it needs to be relocated, it sounds like it doesn't, I think.
So we can keep moving with this?
I agree.
And then deal with Harbor Freight's cuts and so on and so forth?
Right.
The subdivision, correct? You could have, we, we put that as, you know, the talent negotiation.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Um, the only other thing I wanna mention is that, um, we did not find record of adhesion over the sanitary sewer pump, so we looked to White Waters to potentially grant us an easement so that we can have rights to maintain the sewer that's back there, is that something?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say just reach out to Greg, uh, at White Waters, and discuss that, I, I can't imagine that they would be opposed to that, it's, it's the, yeah.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, so it would seem to make sense, and I think we allot enough room, there's enough clearance there and stuff to maintain that.
Okay.
I don't see why that would be a problem, but just talk to them.
Okay.
Well, okay, um, so let's back right off to what we've got for us. Talking about widening the bakery out in front, uh, putting in the loading dock, basically in the back, uh, one of the concerns was to still have, you're, you're showing that, you widen the asphalt to go around that, provisions for pump out for water down into the pit, um, anything else you guys see? I don't see anything else that's concerned for the, for the site.
Provision that can happen.
Yeah. All right, well, when, um, again, this is a public hearing, I don't, if there's anyone here wishing to speak either for or against this project, that's seeing, anyone close to public hearing, bring it back for. not seeing anyone close to public hearing, bring it back for more. Concerns?
Can we just reiterate everything that we're going to do, like correct the square footage, you know?
Yeah, we can move through that. All right, what we want to do is correct the drawing, you know, the square footage numbers that you have here. Well, let's put it in a resolution, you know? So why don't you do secret at first, or do a preliminary? Go ahead, Mark.
What is preliminary? The secret?
Yeah, secret.
Towne Webster Planning Board considered the request by applicant Greg Warrior to modify the existing building construction of a loading dock, demolition and reconstruction of an existing outside storage area and associated site improvement located at 950 Ridge Road on a 37.91 acre parcel having SBL number 079.15-1-1.312. The planning board classifies the proposed action to be a type 2 action under section 617.5 subsection C, subsection 2, and subsection 9 of the state environmental review secret regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Okay, we have a motion. Do you second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We may have to have a motion for preliminary approval for Webster Square. We gotta make a motion. White Waters wants to place a tenant renovations at 950 Ridge Road. Subject to PRC payment. Subject to preliminary, so we can start it accordingly, as specified by the town of Webster. I'll say we could make a plan for the standards of Towne Webster. Apply all requirements of any state county town agency. And let the, the final plans will be the right square footage for each space. Yeah, correct, correct the square footage, the proposed square footage. They both show 41,000 square feet. It's just a title there. You know, stipulate that they clean up the rear of that building? And keep it that way? Yeah, we like to make it a little firmer than that. I don't got it. The current wood siding should be renovated and repaired, yes. Whatever. Yeah, that's it. Yeah. Anyone else we need? I don't think so, Dave. I think it covered it. Make it subject to PRC. Oh, did you put that? Oh, yeah. All right, there's seven for the drawing. Yeah, you can use the S12s. Project number 23. You got it? Project number 230360. All right, that's it. Then we have a motion. Do you need a second?
Yes.
So sorry, I missed that one. Okay, all in favor? See if we have a...
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that part's done. Now we have your final approval on this. Well, go ahead, Dave. Let's... We have the final approval for White Waters' place of tenant renovations at 950 Ridge Road. Subject to project with intimate tenants. Subject to preliminary approval conditions. Subject to all applicable governmental fees. Subject to department public group approvals. That one there will cover the work that would be done by the town. It's a little murder, helping help use and so on and then, and of course... The different construction should occur within the planning board. Explanatory five to two to the fourth. Conditions of the planning and file approval are depicted on the common page of the planning design plan. Any other credit for this?
Are you going to be tapping in or doing any work modifications to the storm sewer?
Storm sewer, storm sewer is private. We do need to do some improvements because we need to pump, it's just the ladder that runs across the back of the building. It has to be pumped out around the new truck dock and then we're going to tie that truck dock right into it. So it's just kind of a relocation of that main. No, it's probably private, isn't it?
So there's no need to put...
I would think that would be probably...
Yeah, I don't, and the sanitary isn't being...
Just the storm, all the grounds. Are aware of that somebody.
All right, see, I don't see where you can go on that. All right, that's your motion there?
Yep.
You put the year, one year, okay. We have a motion. Do you second?
I'll second.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Anybody opposed?
Okay, you're all set. Preliminary final, all right. Good luck with this project.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have some of the new space, right?
Yes, well...
If I, if you can fill up old retail space.
I know it.
You're waiting to see who the...
Oh, yes. It's going to be great.
Okay, thank you, guys.
You bet.
All right, I guess with that, we're all set for the CD. So thanks for coming in.
We need to approve the...
Thanks, John.
... Greg Warrior to approve the... Couple people, one is absentee, Alex is absentee. One more, Jonathan, Jonathan, David, you know, the high worker.
Yeah, I was there.
Yep. So then it's just three people there.
All we need is two there.
Oh, it sounds like a big... Best handout.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're all close. Good chat. Look at that, man. You don't need a flag. I think no one lost a gun, I think.